Well, good morning, everyone. My name is Justin Hodge. I want to thank the Washington County Democratic Party for holding this forum and helping to bring attention to the issues facing our county, specifically Eastern Washington County. I'm a lifelong Michigander, a licensed master social worker, and a professor of social work at the University of Michigan, where I teach graduate-level policy courses. I've committed my entire career to public service and working to improve the lives of others. I'm running for county commissioner because I believe that everyone across our county should have the opportunity to be healthy, to build wealth, and to be safe. But for so many, that's not their reality. We have plenty of different health and wealth and safety inequities across our county. If we look specifically at health disparities, someone living in Ypsilanti Township or Augusta Township has a life expectancy of about six years less than someone just living a few short miles away in Ann Arbor. If we look county-wide, African-Americans live, on average, 10 years shorter than their white neighbors, while Latino and Latino residents live 16 years less. Wealth disparities are also terrible. An average household income in Ypsilanti Township is about $12,000 less than it is in Ann Arbor. And even more shocking, on average, the median household income for African-Americans is about half that of white households. And I know we could do so much better than that, and that's why I've committed my entire career to public service. As a social worker, I provided vital mental health care services to children, adults, and families, often working with individuals in crisis. Now, as a professor of social work, I teach courses to prepare my students to find policy solutions to address the most pressing problems facing our society. To address the challenges facing our county, we need bold, progressive, creative ideas. My experiences have prepared me to face these challenges head-on. In my work on the county's Board of Health, I provided insight into health issues facing our county, as well as potential solutions. In my work on the county's Community Action Board, I've tackled issues of economic inequality and poverty, facing not just Eastern Washington County, but the county as a whole. And as Chair of the Shares Community Advisory Board for Law Enforcement, I lead discussions on community policing and how we can make our county safer for everyone. I'm prepared to serve as your county commissioner to fight for the things that are important to you in county government.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hodge. Denise Kertoff, would you please make a two-minute opening statement?
All right. Thank you, everybody, and good morning. And thank you to the WCDP for giving me this time right now. My name is Denise Kertoff. I actually live in District 5. I've been in District 5 for over 15 years, where I've been here with my three children and my husband, and we love it here. I've always been a community activist. As a matter of fact, I was born one, not by choice, but because my mom was a community activist. And the day she was arrested and released in the South was the day that she gave birth to me. And it was actually the day I was giving honorary membership to the Democratic Party in the South. It was the same day I was born, because I was born directly due to that. I've always been a community activist. I've always listened to my neighbors and the community, and I've seen a lot of issues that have just been passed by. I see a lot of people at the top level saying, "Okay, this is the problem. These are the issues. Let us go out and solve them." And one of the problems that me and my neighbors have in our community is no one talks to us. Everybody wants to make a decision. They want to meet in their private rooms and tell us what's best for us without coming to our community and sitting down and talking to us. As a matter of fact, I just had a neighbor stop me a few minutes ago, and they were actually discussing that. So what I'm looking for in running for Washington County is like a healthy Washington County for all. I'm looking to help with environmental justice for us, with medical and economic and social impact in our community. And we can only do that by talking to the constituents in our community. I mean, it is really great and fine to help everybody, you know, to meet with different organizations and find out what we need done in our community, but in the end, we have to talk to the people in our community. Eastern Washington County needs someone who will fight for us and who will listen to us, instead of us just listening to them all the time. And that's why I'm running for Washington County Commissioner in the 5th District. And once again, WCDP, thank you very much for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you so much. Ms. Karen Rowe is next, but I would first like to see if I can turn the mic over to Kathleen Murphy. See if this works. So Kathleen, I'm going to make the post. Can you, Kathleen, can you now? Can you now join the meeting? Try. See. You'll have to unmute yourself. No, we still have the same problem, I'm afraid. It's just not working. So I think I'm going to continue with Ms. Rowe. Would you please make your two-minute opening statement? You're muted, unfortunately. You'll have to unmute yourself. I think this is something in your control, Ms. Rowe. Can you drop your cursor to the bottom left of the screen? And, okay.
I'm traveling, so if I get disconnected...
Okay.
I'm unmuted on my screen.
You're unmuted. Yes, now we can hear you.
All right. Thank you. I just want to tell you that I am traveling, so if I get disconnected, please feel free to continue on. But life circumstances made me have to be on the road today. Anyways, thank you so much for hosting this for us. I'm Karen Love J. Rowe, and as you know, I'm a candidate for the Washington County Commission in the 5th District. I have a lifelong passion to help others, and if I am so blessed by the voters of my district to continue to be trusted, to serve them, it would be a great opportunity to utilize my lifelong experience, beginning as a young person growing up on the east side of the county, and as a leader and mentor throughout my school years at both Willerun High School and Willerun Middle School and Elementary Schools, and at Eastern Michigan University. I've been a public school teacher. I've been a teacher and facilitator of union management, education, and workplace democracy specialists at the University of Michigan's Labor Studies Center at the Institute of Labor and Industrial Relations. And I've been an assembly line worker at Ford Motor Company, and I've been elected to represent those through the UAW who I worked with. I have my mother of five children and a grandmother of nine children, and I've been an elected municipal government official. And it would be great to be able to use all those experiences and my life skills to serve those who I've lived side by side for my entire lifetime. As I frequently say, if you need anything at all, government-related or on a personal level, please just ask, call, or email me, because if I don't know the answer or the path to seek to help you, I know someone who does. It would be an honor and a privilege and a gift to be able to continue to serve you and help you, all my lifelong friends and all the residents of my district who I've lived side by side for all my life. Thank you very much for this opportunity. I look forward to the rest of the questions. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Mr. Michael White.
Thank you so much, and thank you, WCDP, for hosting this. Again, I just want to thank everyone for the potential opportunity to serve in a leadership role in our community as we embark upon the new normal during this post during COVID-19. My plans for our future are bold and robust. I just want to empower residents of Washington County to achieve the kind of change in government that allows all families, regardless of race, color, or gender, to labor effectively together to build healthy, prosperous, and sustainable home schools, businesses, and communities. These plans will ensure the stability, health equity, and economic inclusion of Ypsilanti Township, Augusta Township, and the whole county. Our community will lead local and state issues while sustaining the ingredients that make our township a quality place to live, work, learn, pray, and play. You can expect that I will ensure your tax dollars are funding county programs for our areas. Listen to your problems, concerns, and connect you to the services or information that you need and that you deserve. Work to level the playing field by having our fair share of the $300 million county budget, and work for improved education, creating better jobs and pay, fair housing policy, and economic inclusion for all families. As a veteran, I understand serving with courage and dignity. I understand the importance of education and resilience. And as a longtime resident here, embarking about 20 years as an advocate heading many organizations and committees with empathy, passion, and concern, I bring my leadership and community experience. Look, I'm focused on what matters to you, and I look forward to answering your questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Again, I'm winging this a little bit, but bear with me. I'd like to start off with a question about the controversy that has arisen with respect to this race. I hope that we can discuss this with the first question and then move on to other issues. So my understanding is that, Ms. Rowe, you had filed initially to become clerk, and that on the last day of filing, you changed your filing to run for this position. And instead, Heather Rowe, who's your daughter-in-law, filed for the position of clerk. The Washington County Democratic Party found this action to be unfair and non-transparent because it took place at the last minute, and therefore, well, I'll leave it at that. And it, in fact, adopted, the Executive Board adopted a resolution contending this change. I would like to ask the members of the panel for their views on this action. Was it, is it problematic? Do you agree with the condemnation of the Washington County Democratic Party or not? So I'll start first going down, again, the alphabetical order, starting now with Denise. I'll ask you first. I think you need to unmute yourself. Ms. Kertoff?
I'm sorry. I couldn't hear the last of that. It was like you flipped out.
Sorry. The question, was there a problem in the switch made by Ms. Rowe from running for clerk to running for this seat on the last day in which filing for the race was permitted? Was that a problem or not?
I feel like it was an issue, especially when it comes to voters, because the one thing we have to look at is there has been, all across the country, there has been...
I now don't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Okay. Sorry about that. Like I was saying... Hello?
I can hear you.
Oh, because I keep hearing somebody else talking.
I think that maybe actually be Kathleen Murphy on the phone in the background.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Kathleen, now you could take over. So we can hear your voice? That's wonderful.
All right. Perfect. Wonderful.
Let me just finish this round, and I'll turn it over to you. Ms. Kertoff?
Okay. Once again, I think there was a lot of issues with, I think it has become an issue because of accessibility, transparency, and trust. We've seen voters' rights issues all across the country, especially during this particular presidency. So anytime that voters seem to think that they don't have the same accessibility as people in power, and they don't tend to trust you. When you're meeting, you know, in back rooms, when you're off to yourself, and when you are able to have access to an office that someone else isn't necessarily able to have accessibility to, so yeah, you create a lot of distrust. And I think what has happened is there's become a lot of distrust in Washington County, and I can truly understand that. Like I say, accessibility and transparency is one thing. We want to always encourage, you know, more diversity in candidates, and we also want to encourage accessibility. So I think what Washington County saw was, for the first time, that we were about, you know, we were at the beginning of a historical precipice, and of all places, very liberal Washington County. Either way it was going to go, there was going to be a candidate of color. And this was actually, according to some friends of mine across the country, this was actually being picked off, not just here in Washington County in Michigan. I actually saw some of it trending in California and Texas of our little county. And then all of a sudden, you know, there was what other people were calling a switcheroo. So, and like I say, I think that threw a lot of people, and it was very, and it becomes very discouraging when you live in a community that's supposed to be one of the most liberal communities in the state, and you see something like this. I mean, there's only, even non-white people sort of took this as, what just happened? Is this another power play? I mean, we need to be united in Washington County. We have a lot of issues going on right now, because I didn't even...
We've lost you for a second. Okay.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't know why that keeps happening. But like I say, I woke up to three of my neighbors knocking at my door en masse, and two of them were literally in tears and didn't understand what went on and was it legal. So like I say, I think we need a leader. You know, I think if we're going to be leaders in the state with our county, we have to project pure transparency and accessibility to our offices and not just for the selected few with privilege.
Thank you very much. Ms. Rowe? You'll have to unmute yourself.
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I just want to say that it's a great opportunity to finally be able to talk to the Washington County Democratic Party about this issue. Because the most disheartening and very hurtful was to find out, I don't know, days after, that a resolution that had my name specifically typed in it was adopted by the Executive Board. I looked and asked for the minutes, and I recognized that the people on the Executive Board, I did not know, with the exception of maybe of one person, and well, one person was absent that I knew. I did not have any personal connections, or to my knowledge, have never had a conversation with any of those people who voted such a resolution of condemnation without a conversation or any due process. I think that if it was a serious, you know, that that was going to happen, it would have been respectful and the most democratic thing to do, to bring myself and Heather J. Rowe to confront our accusers, as is normal in our country, but especially in the Democratic Party. The word "Democratic" to me means due process, and we didn't get that. So I welcome the opportunity to talk about this. Like many other candidates across the county and the state and the nation, I filed on the last day. I did change my mind. There were several candidates in my jurisdiction, in Ypsilanti Township, who actually did the same thing, but yet I was the only one who was picked out to be crucified by the county board or by the Washington County Democratic Party. I find that, you know, it was just really upsetting. I changed my mind. I've explained that in a piece that went out, so I'm not going to go to that, because all my voters got that, and probably some of you there. As to why that happened, like many people, there's a lot of reasons that go into changing your mind. I am more than willing to serve and be a part of that community of elected officials. I think that my reputation precedes itself. I've been trusted for 32, over 32 years, by my constituents, and we'll see whether or not that that holds true, the reputation that I have. I'm a person of high integrity, always have been. I have run 29 elections in my 12 years without one, and every single one of those has been audited either by the Board of Canvassers, by the State Audit Department, or the County Clerk's Office, without one single question. I give that honor to all my staff, who does the grunt of the work, you know, constantly and daily. So anyways, that's really all I have to say, is that it's just extremely disheartening as a member of the Democratic Party since my early 20s. I'm a douche pain, my father, my family has been, my husband has been, and just to be slighted and ignored and just so outrageously dismissed. And I understand, I forgive you. You need to know that. I have forgiven you because I really believe that those of you that were involved in that don't understand. I mean, it's one of the issues, it's a big issue on the County Board of Commissioners, that people there don't understand what happens on the east side of the county and who we are, both politically and who we are in terms of our everyday lives. And that's something I really want to bring to the County Board of Commissioners, is a person who's been here, lived here, born here, raised here, and be able to represent my constituents, who are my neighbors, my friends, people I have grown up with for my entire life. So I'm excited about that, to bring that voice forward. But thank you for the opportunity to express my feelings about the terrible resolution that was adopted, that was actually, you didn't have a chance to even find out the truth about it. So thank you.
Mr. White?
So was it, was it fair? There was information that was put out. The information that was put out was based on the facts as we know them to be. It's true that when faced with a crisis, you have an opportunity to either build character or reveal your character. And from what the information that has been put out, it revealed character. There have been individuals who have stated that they want to see diversity. Most of us want to see diversity in the communities, especially on the different elected boards and the, at the elected offices that we have. And when there was an opportunity to have diversity at that particular position for county commissioner, that was upended. It was literally upended at the last hour. So if we are reflecting on what had occurred, the facts speak for themselves. Now, there could be all types of reasons why individuals do that, and that's fine. Everyone has a right to run for whatever position they want. Everything that was done, there was nothing done illegal. But it is all about relationships, character, and integrity. And as a veteran, I understand having to build your character and your integrity when you are fighting for your country, and bringing that same passion back here to your community. You want to make sure that your character and your integrity stand on their own. And we have that opportunity now, when we are electing who we want as their current county commissioner. So again, everyone has an opportunity to run, but those relationships that you build, trust, has to be communicated throughout the entire voting population, and that's what we currently have an opportunity to do here in Ypsilanti Township for the 5th District and Augusta Township.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hodge?
All right. So in the interest of full disclosure, I'm on the Executive Board for the Washington County Democratic Party, and I want to make sure people understand that when this resolution was being discussed and voted on, I abstained from voting on it because of the obvious conflict of interest reasons there. So I was not involved in passing the resolution. And the reality of the situation is that it was legal, what Clerk Rowe did. Whether or not people condemn it, it doesn't, it doesn't change whether that it was illegal and that there would still be an election. I ran against the incumbent for this seat in 2018, and I'm running again, and I've been running since, I believe, I filed back in September. Clerk Rowe getting into the race doesn't deter me from continuing to run my campaign and focusing on the issues that I want to address in the county, focusing on those health, wealth, and safety inequities, and making our county a place where everyone has the opportunity to thrive and be successful. I was certainly disappointed to see the last-minute change, but it's not going to deter me from continuing to do the work that I'm already doing with the county and the capacity, the appointed positions that I serve in, and the work that I do in my neighborhood. I'm just going to continue on with the campaign and do what I can to win on August 4th. Clerk Rowe did mention the mailer that she recently sent out, and there is one thing on the mailer that I do agree with. I'm going to read from it. There's a line that says, "Our future depends on the next generation being willing to serve our community." Well, I'm ready. I've been working for years at this, so I'm going to win August 4th.
Thank you very much. I'm now going to turn the meeting over to Kathleen Murphy. I assume that her mic is working. Kathleen?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Could you tell me where you are?
The next question goes to Karen Rowe. So we're doing it in alphabetical order, so Ms. Rowe, then Mr. White, then Mr. Hodge, then Ms. Kertoff. That's the order for the next question.
Were you answering a question, or were you just doing the statement?
I just answered, I asked him the question we discussed about responses to the way in which the filing took place.
Okay.
I think you have time for one more question, frankly.
Well, I have one that's, I'll put it out there. One of the priorities of the Washington County Board of Commissioners is to, quote, "ensure the community safety net," unquote. Given our current troubled times of confronting COVID-19, racial injustice, police brutality, and environmental crises, what policies would you urge the board to enact to face at least some of these multiple crises, and why? So it goes to Karen Love J. Rowe here first.
Okay. Here I am. I'm not really opposed to any new policies, but only policies that have specific measurable actions to be taken to give real meaning to them should be adopted by the county commission. Currently, we need action and not necessarily more policies. For our entire history, the east side of the county has been neglected, and that's to put it mildly, in the best sense of that, of the description. But at the worst, it has been severely penalized for our roots, our background, our race, and our poverty. We have been victims, and still are, of classism and racism. Many over the years have had good intentions and good hearts, but this has not been, has not brought us solutions to our problems. Part of the problem is the lack of understanding of who we are and where we came from. We are the first generation of...
Karen, we've lost your voice.
...stop both black and white from poverty for a better life. We're the... .........................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
So, the policies that we currently have address the current issues, but we need to expand on them. The, for instance, the safety net policy, right? It needs to be expanded to include economic inclusion. That is one of the biggest challenges that we currently have. The ability for individuals to have access to wealth. Provide grants, proper guidance and training for individuals to start their own businesses. When you're able to start your own businesses in your community, that provides economic and health equity to residents to have a secure home, to have food, to get rid of those food deserts, to have transportation and healthcare. These are the issues that affect the 5th District and the whole county. We are going to continue to have these challenges going forward. So we need to start thinking strategically. I understand social justice. I am all for social justice, but economic justice changes everything. That changes what we currently do and how we do it. We need to have policy that provides grants. We give out scholarships for school. We need to have, uh, grants for individuals to start their own businesses in the communities in which they live. This will take away some of those challenges that we are currently facing. We are in a pandemic based on top of multiple epidemics. I had the privilege of being overseas, um, for five years, and with my job, and seeing what true poverty looks like. I have seen that firsthand. I know and bring back the best practices to move forward in helping our community to strive in the economic wealth that we need. We need to make sure that people have and are able to be, uh, have housing close to job centers. We need to have affordable housing. We need to have people to have the opportunity with policies to have the opportunity to take care of their children. I was a single parent. I understand what those challenges are. I was one of those individuals who was homeless at one time. I understand what that means. I know what those challenges look like, and in the 5th District, we need someone here who is backed by those in the community who support them. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Michael. Next is, uh, Justin Hodge.
Yeah, so there's a lot to this question to try to answer in two minutes. I'm going to go through it as quickly as I can and be solution-focused. So the pandemic is really shining a spotlight on the health inequity issues facing our county. I live in the 48198 zip code, which along with 48197 accounts for almost half of the COVID-19 cases in our county. Uh, so throughout the pandemic, I've been working with community partners to distribute and deliver household cleaning supplies, uh, produce to hundreds of families in Sugarbrook, which is my neighborhood, uh, and other neighborhoods that are hardest hit. After the pandemic is behind us, we're going to need to be able to continue programs like this, and I'm going to advocate for the county commission to continue providing financial support for that. On the subject of racial injustice, so the county recently passed a racial equity ordinance and created a racial equity office to address systemic racism. Uh, because this office is so new, it's going to be imperative that we have strong support among the Board of Commissioners to maintain, uh, appropriate funding for it. I'm going to, and I will fight for that as your commissioner. Uh, and now in creating that racial equity ordinance, uh, the county worked with the government alliance on race and equity, uh, in developing those plans. And I would support deepening this relationship and then partnering with the People's Institute for Survival and Beyond. Uh, to, they have a, an excellent training program that's called Undoing Racism, and I would want county staff to be trained in that. Uh, and then also on racial equity, I would, uh, one of the first acts I would make is to work towards getting, uh, Washtenaw County to join the Welcoming America Network, uh, which would connect us with partners across the country with resources, uh, to make our community more welcoming. On the subject of police brutality, uh, absolutely unacceptable. Uh, and that's why I worked to become the Chair of the Sheriff's Community Advisory Board so I could make a positive, uh, difference in policing in our district and in our county. Uh, as county commissioner, I would work to create consistent, or to promote consistency in police training, uh, and community engagement across all the police forces across the county. And then on our environment, so we can't have economic justice without environmental justice, and I would explore opportunities to create more, uh, solar farms at our county parks as well as other forms of renewable energy. Uh, and I support the development of a plan to shift the county government to 100% renewable energy sources, uh, incentivizing residents, uh, and businesses to use more renewable sources, which are largely to be solar installations at, at the current time.
Justin. Now Denise? Uh, you're, you're, you're...
Okay, once again, thank you guys. Um, like I said, COVID has highlighted all of these things, but sadly, they aren't new. These are problems that our community has had before, and it's just sort of amazing to me that at the top or level of our community that they didn't know, uh, did, didn't know that this was going on. I have been involved with food banks in Washtenaw County for 12 years. We have, uh, created a coalition in a community that has been crying out for over 12 years for the need of more sustainable food banks in our community. And like I say, this has been a 12-year project for me. This just didn't start. So that inequality has been there. Um, as of right now, we have inequality with broadband in our community. That's something that was brought to the county, oh, the federal funding for that, uh, almost two years ago, but nothing was really done about it. I have been crying out for that. I was actually one of the people in Augusta Township and in the township that I live in right now handing out homework packets to kids. So I, I know what the problems are, and we've been discussing these problems in the schools, um, for over five years now. And the problem is that nobody's done anything about it. So there, there's definitely time for a change. COVID has highlighted all the problems we're seeing right now. We must strengthen our existing councils and commissions with experts and dedicated, um, diversity and people within our community, not just the same people all the time. We need to hear from our community what they need. We can meet with every board in the world and do, and they can tell us what they need, but we need to listen to our community. I've actually gone in-depth on some of these, um, things. If you go to votedeniskurchoff.com, I've actually started the beginning of policies right now, and they're actually on my webpage. Once again, I'm sorry, votedeniskurchoff.org. So if you go and look, I've actually started to write these policies. I've looked into the budgets. I've looked into the existing programs. I've talked to experts, and I've actually added on to them. And once again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Denise. Um, folks, we're really running over time, so what I'm going to say is, I'll give each of you, and I'll start again with Justin, each of you 30 seconds to make one last statement. Justin?
Oh, okay. Uh, well, thank you all for, uh, hosting this forum. I guess my quick statement would be that you want a county commissioner that's going to be able to hit the ground running. Uh, I have the support of six of the current county commissioners, including the chair, which is important because if you want to make any kind of sustained policy change, you're going to have to be able to work effectively with the people that are already doing the job. I've been working with county government for years. Uh, I know how county government works, both professionally during my time as a clinical social worker, having worked for a community mental health system, but now with the work that I do with the Office of Community Economic Development and the Health Department. Uh, so I have the support to get, start making these changes that I want to talk about. If you want to learn more about what we're going to do, I invite you to visit votejustinhodge.com.
Justin, Denise?
Once again, guys, thank you very much for this. You know, for me, this, for me, and for the people, this is not a part-time job for me. This is not a step up for me. This is not a step down. I have been in this community for 12 years. These are issues I have been dealing with for 12 years, and I want to help and support this community. I, I only entered the race because there just didn't seem to be a response. And even during COVID, there just didn't seem to be a response from the county board. I mean, it took quite a time. And like I say, this isn't a part-time job. It's not a step up. It's not a step down. I don't want to walk in front of my community. I want to walk side by side with my community so they can tell us what they need, not just to sit into an office and cut them off and make decisions for them. That's what this job is about. It's about the community and what we need to help them with. And once again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Denise. Now Karen Longjoy Rowe?
Uh, she seems no longer to be on the panel. Kathleen?
Okay, um, Michael White?
Thank you so much, and thank you for the opportunity. There's a reason why Commissioner Jefferson, Ricky Jefferson, in the 6th District is endorsing me. There's a reason why Supervisor Stumble here in Ipsy Lamy Township, and most of the elected officials on the township board have endorsed me because I've built relationships with them. I've been here close to 20 years, and I know them, and they know me. They know my character. They know my integrity. They know the passion that I have for this community. So you want someone representing you who knows the community, who was endorsed by this community, and that is my neighbors, my friends, the advocates, all of those people, the educators who are responsible for making sure that your life is a great place to live, work, learn, pray, and play. You can reach more at electmichaelwhite.com. Thank you so much. Thank you, panel.
Thank you all. It's been a delight having you here and hearing what you have to say. I learned a whole lot. Sorry for our little bit of, um, technical difficulties, but I think we overcame them. So, thank you.